Good evening, everyone. We certainly glad to have you all here. Would you bow your heads with us, please? In turn of God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for this day. I ask you to bless our city in a great way and keep us going forward and continue to give our city council wisdom and knowledge how to lead and guide this city. In your name we pray. Amen. We want to thank you all, thank all you all for being here tonight. And we are, oh, we are going to have a public hearing tonight on item number one, consideration of zoning district map change from B1 to general business district, B2 central business district of the following railroad corner properties, 122 Treadwell Street, tax map number 01731404014000, 118 Treadwell Street, tax map number 0173140001300, 110 Treadwell Street, tax map number 01731400402600, 1701 Russell Street, tax map number 0173140401200, 1705 Russell Street, tax map number 0173140402700, 1711 Russell Street, tax map number is 017314040111, 1715 and 1719 Russell Street, tax map number 0173040140000, 1721 Russell Street, tax map number is 01731404009000, 11, 1111 and 11 and 117 Boulevard Street, tax map number 01731404008000, 135 Boulevard, tax map number 01731404007000. Is there anybody in the audience would like to come forward and speak about this public hearing? If so, would you come forward now and state your name and your address and speak directly into the mic? Thank you. If not, we're going to move on to item number two. Consideration of a zoning district map change from 01, 01 Office Institution to Residential to B1 General Business District for the properties belonging to Phyllis Pazella, 1090 St. Matthews Road, tax map number 0173050500100. Henry Ken Floyd Jr., 1070 St. Matthews Road, tax map number 0173050501500, and Glenda Ziegler, 1080 St. Matthews Road, tax map number 0173050501600. Is there anybody would like to speak concerning these properties in public hearing? Would you come forth now and state your name and your address? And you have five minutes, please.
Well, I guess I'll go first since there was a five minute. You reminded me of the five minute rule. But I'm going to read from my notes and thoughts because when I spoke at the zoning committee meeting, I got really emotional. So I'm going to try not to now.
Okay. State your name and address.
I will. So I'm Paula O'Neil, and I'm at 1205 Dancler Street, which is right behind there. So good evening, Mayor Butler and the City Council members. Thanks for letting me speak with you. First, I wanted to say that I can understand where Mr. Floyd and Ms. Floyd is coming from wanting to sell their home. He and his wife are really nice people. We've spoken on a few occasions, and I generally think they're good people. I have compassion for what they go through on a nightly basis since the CPM was allowed to be built and then placement of the ATM machines right up next to his yard and window. With that being said, I truly believe passing these addresses to a B1 zone will create another, you know, business backed up to someone's yard or window or driveway. It would possibly create more than one homeowner greatly affected based on all three properties and where their property lines are for the people on Stewart Street or the people on Dancler Street that are right behind them. So I'd like to ask or would like to know, why isn't OI zone good enough for those homeowners to sell their properties? So I wanted to speak about a few points mentioned from the other two homeowners, and they were mentioned at a different public forum, because I went first there as well. It was mentioned, no one knows what OI zoning is, and it's confusing to prospective developers. Well, I didn't know what OI zone was, and I was curious. So it took me less than three minutes of an online search on the Orangeburg County, I'm sorry, Orangeburg City website to not only know the difference between an OI zone and a B1 zone, but also to pull your list of zoned ordinances and what can go where and what's allowed and what's not, and to read your table of allowances. I'm positive developers have multiple people on their staff that could find this information just as easily as I did. They also stated they wanted to push B1 zone change so the property is like what's already around there. Sure, there's a CPM on their side of the street, but you know what else is there? Homeowners and families. And they started, stated that when you drive down, they wanted that to look like the other businesses going around up there, businesses being built in that area, but no, there isn't. There's still family and homes right on the side since as far back as I can remember. And lastly, they stated they believe all residents facing St. Matthews Road would eventually become businesses. Well, I don't agree with that, having spoke to some. And to that, I would add, if that's what they wanted, why hasn't that happened yet? It's been the same since I was born, and not everybody wants to sell to a potential business or at all. Some people want to leave their homes to their families. So what's wrong with keeping things the same, protecting the charm of original parts of Orangeburg, keeping homes for sale in the market majority of Americans can afford so all people can become homeowner? Businesses can come, and I 100% agree with her. Businesses should come to Orangeburg. But you know where they should go? They should go in downtown Orangeburg where there's already beautiful storefronts being built and in need of revitalization. And isn't that what the revitalization of downtown Orangeburg was all about that's on your website? Another would appear to be homeowner of one of these addresses made a statement as to why now are current owners coming forward or coming, you know, current neighbors? Well, this one's easy for me to answer because I'm a new homeowner in that neighborhood. And while it's true, two of the three that spoke out against it that are able to come to the meetings grew up in the neighborhood and are family homes. Until you actually own the home, you don't get your letters, right? And you don't get to know what's going on and taking place. I certainly, it certainly wasn't disclosed to me when we closed on the property. So those perhaps watching who couldn't make it in or physically not able to make it into these meetings in person could focus on what the differences in zones mean to the folks still living in Pecan Way Terrace. For the most part.
We, you're going over your time, but that, but we got the message of what you're saying.
Okay.
We got, we got the whole, you know, message of what you're saying in the City Council.
Okay, that was five minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Let me see if I can talk my neighbor into reading the rest.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Thank you so much for coming, and we'll take what you're saying on advisement. Okay. Okay, you.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Oh, come on, come on, come on.
I thought you were going to get somebody else to speak. Oh, that's fine. Randy Schuler, my wife Glenda, I think y'all all know who we are and where her property is. I understand their concerns. We've talked about.
Put your address, tell us your address.
1080 St. Matthews is her address. Okay, we live in the city also. Our concern is being treated fairly with everything else that the city has already done. We understand their thoughts, their concerns. We're on that highway out front, so I understand their concerns on that end of it, on the Dancler Street side. We just feel like with what we've had to us, OI is good, yes. But you can also keep OI if you have B1. We've had more people interested in something that could be put there with B1. B1 can also be OI. OI can't be B1. So for our interest, we would like to see it go to B1. Similar to the property where Walgreens on St. Matthews Road, Chestnut, the houses. Prior to those buildings being there, there were homes, all of them, from Nelson right around Nelson, around the Popeyes, back, back to Chestnut. They were homes. The owner that bought all those homes, rest his soul, he's not here now, but he bought them with the intent of progressing the city of Orangeburg. He's done it. It was approved. We're just asking City Council for fair treatment in the same instant where we are on this end of St. Matthews Road. Appreciate your help. Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schuler. Are there any more persons that would like to speak in the public hearing before we move on? If not, we want to thank both of them for coming and speaking to the council, and we certainly will take what you're saying on advisement. Okay, we're going to move into our agenda, regular agenda. Item number three, consideration of November 21st, 2023 City Council minutes.
Move for passage.
Been moved by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Next item, recognition of December community of character trait, and the trait is gratitude. Gratitude is the quality of being thankful. Gratitude is the quality of being thankful. December is a month that we are, we are, we stop to celebrate being thankful. So we're going to ask all the citizens of this city, we urge you to adopt the community trait of gratitude, of being thankful. Item number four, an O business. I think that this is our city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Item number four for your consideration is second reading of an ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024. As you all may recall from the last meeting, there have been times in the past where the airport, because it's an enterprise fund, was not included as a part of the budget, and then there have been times when it has been included. So this time, we wanted to make sure that it is included so this amendment would include the airport as an enterprise fund as a part of the budget. And while we have this opportunity to amend it, we also wanted to make sure that we included the hospitality and accommodations tax and added the new commercial sanitation rates as well. This does not affect the general fund. It does not affect the levy of property taxes, but it's just an effort to make sure that everything is included for your benefit and for the public's benefit. I ask for your consideration.
Okay. Are there any discussions on item number four before we read the ordinance? If not, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024. Motion been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Item number five, second reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I come before you for a second reading on an ordinance to amend our building and housing of the code of ordinances for the city for the International Property Maintenance Code. And what this is, is we have taken a new initiative in the way that we provide notices and also fines to individuals that are, we're experiencing code violations. And one thing I wanted to point out was the kind of the scale. I don't think I really gave a good, clear explanation of that last time, so I wanted to make sure to do it this time. That the scale is a, it's a slot, it's a moving scale. Your first 30 days of violation, if you do not correct a violation, is $25 a day. It goes up to $50 a day after that, and then it'll go up again. If you're a habitual offender, it will go up to $75 a day. So the intent, we do not want to collect fines. That, that is not the intent of this ordinance. The intent is, is to help clean the city up, work with people to do that. But at the same time, we found it has been sometimes difficult to actual serve a ticket to somebody. In this case, we're able to send letters and, and post the property in order to move forward with, with code enforcement. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And, and once, once you're notified, they're notified if it's not corrected, it's $25.
A day.
A day. And I just want to say this to you, Mr. Sein. Aiken, Aiken City does this, and when you drive through Aiken, it's very clean. And if we don't do, if we don't do something about this, our city will continue to look like it looks. And I just think that it's, and, and please, Mr. Sein, you and your staff, nobody's exempted.
Yes, sir.
Not even City Council.
Yes, sir.
Nobody's exempted.
Yes, sir.
Because we want our city to get clean, and we want things to happen in our city. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion?
I just have a question. What's the timeframe for compliance?
You have, I mean, you, you receive your notice, and then you have a period of time to complete. Yeah, basically, if you respond back to us, we'll try to work with you. And if not, then the enforcement exists as it goes along. So basically, it accrues. If someone ends up not doing the work they say they're going to do, then that enforcement action, the count will continue, basically. And if we don't hear from anybody at all, which we have that happen a lot, then we just move forward with enforcement, and then we'll reach a point that we will then get with our city attorney, and we will take it to court to get a judgment.
So there's no set timeframe for compliance before the fines are?
Well, the fi, the fines, the fines can be, there are a couple of ways the fines can be dealt with. We will not, we will not fine anybody until they're judged by a court of law. This also allows us to allow the city administrator or his designee to make decisions if the person's going to waive the fine. But what we have happened many times, and this is why we've done this, where we've given clear notice, many times someone will tell us, we're going to fix this, or they contact us, and we take that notice, and our code enforcement official puts it over here to the side because they're waiting on that person to do that. It gets lost in the paper, and the next thing you know, we recycle right back. So they have plenty of time if they contact us and they make good effort to move forward. But we will reach, typically, the trigger point will be over 30 days before.
The what point?
The trigger to cause it to go to court would be over 30 days. So if, if someone just said, I'm going to take care of this, and in 30 days they haven't taken care of it, we may very well to go to court, or we may wait 60 days. It gives us options to be able to do that.
John, I want to say this, and to be, to be more specific, because this is a passion of mine also. To be more specific about this, if you could interject in your, in your writing or in your rules, I'll say 30 days after you receive your letter, if you could do that, I don't know whether you could do that or not.
We can certainly, it's in there.
Yeah, 30 days, it, it's in the matter. Y'all have the letter over there?
Yes.
Yeah. Read it, read it for us.
In fact, that's the question I was asking because it says for compliance with the notice to correct violations within the timeframe given on the first notice of violation. So what is that timeframe?
30 days. So the, the notice letters will go out and effectively say from the date of the notice letter or 30 days from the posting of the property. That's the timeframe that the owner has to correct the deficiencies that are noted in the notice letter. If 30 days go by and they fail to correct the deficiencies, then the property is re-inspected, and then you get into the escalating fine structure.
Thank you. That was my question.
That's answered.
Okay.
But I think that 30 days is especially enough time. If you live or even rent the place, you are in and out of your area collecting your rent or paying your bills. You know what's around your house. It's plenty enough time to take care of what you're supposed to. We have got to be dominant about what we want from this city, and it's up to us to try and let people know that we are serious about what we are doing. We cannot be giving them more time and more time. It keeps going. Let's do the ordinance and work on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, are there any more questions or concerns before I read the ordinance? An ordinance to amend Chapter 13 Building and Housing of the Code of the City of Orangeburg and to amend the International Properties Maintenance Code. I need a motion.
Move for passage.
Motion's been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knotts. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I stand before you to present the ordinance to approve a change to the zoning map district from B1 General Business District to B2 Central Business District for properties located on Treadwell, Russell, and Boulevard Streets. The physical addresses and tax map numbers have already been read. A copy of the map outlining the properties in question was included in your packet along with detailed minutes from the planning commission meeting. As a reminder, this was a recommendation from the planning commission meeting. And B1 is defined as general business, and a B2 designation is considered an extension of the B1, which accommodates more of a mixed-use property. And since this is referring to Railroad Corner, which will be considered mixed-use, which is commercial as well as residential, that designation would be more appropriate. I think we have on the line Mr. John Ford, who is on Zoom. He's with the, he's a project planner for Railroad Corner. In the event there are questions that need to be answered.
Okay, Council, are there any discussions about item number six before we read the ordinance from anybody? And I think that Ms. Williams, they have put corrected, is that the corrected map?
That one was for St. Matthews Road.
St. Matthews, okay.
Right.
All right. Okay, so are there any discussions about this from anyone before we read this? I'm not going to read all the tax map numbers, but I'm going to read it in this wise. An ordinance to approve the change to the zoning district map of the, of the general business district to B2 Central Business District properties located at the following properties that are listed. And I would like to receive a motion to, intend a motion for these properties.
Move for approval.
Second. It's been properly moved by Councilman Kalu and second by Councilman Hannah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay. Item number seven, matters pertaining to the Department of Public Utilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
You have a for you third reading of an ordinance, City of Orangeburg authorizing the execution and delivery of a transfer of the Bull Swamp Water System to the DPU of the City of Orangeburg Department of Public Utilities. And this is a third reading, reading item, and there is no change to the item at this point.
Okay. Are there any discussions on item number seven regarding Department of Public Utilities? Are there any discussions on that? If not, I'm going to read the ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Orangeburg authorizing the execution and delivery of a sale and transfer agreement and between Orangeburg Department of Public Utilities, South Carolina, and Bull Swamp Rural Water Company, Inc., authorizing the implementation of Bull Swamp rate classification and other matters related thereto. We would like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Grievous and second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion is carried.
Just a reminder for council, this transfer will be effective on January 1. A part of that requires us to also adopt the water rates for Bull Swamp, and this ordinance remains unchanged from its initial reading. And we recommend passing.
Okay. Miss Hall, I don't think they can hear you.
Third reading of an ordinance adopting water rates for the Bull Swamp Water System.
Right.
Going, again, this ordinance has gone unchanged from the last previous readings.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to read the ordinance here. If that's, if, is there any discussions on this ordinance? Is there any discussions on this ordinance? If not, adopting the water rates for the Bull Swamp territory for the Department of Public Utilities effective January 1, 2024. Motion been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have for your first reading on item that we have briefed you in on executive session, budget amendment for the Gas Division Project House 2. And I have Dr. Mr. Bert Dergen, I call him Dr. Dervin all the time. He can answer any questions you might have specific to the project, but this would be a budget amendment of $900,000 that we're, we're asking.
Okay. Do we have any questions regarding this ordinance that we need to direct to Mr. Dergen? Anybody on the council, any question that we need to direct to him? Or everybody following this?
Which one you say, Coach?
Which one you say, Coach?
Nine hundred thousand dollars.
You finished which?
Yeah. Inflation is tough.
And it's already on go?
Talking at my, talking at my.
It looks good. Everything looks good on go?
Yes, sir.
Just talking in second session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, an ordinance amending the City of Orangeburg Department of Public Utilities Operating Budget Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, DPU Project House. We would like to entertain a motion, please.
Move for the adoption.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna see. We have executive sessions and we have three items uh in executive session. Number ten, discussion of negotiation of incident to propose a contractual agreement and the other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. Project Middletown, South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A two. Item eleven, discussion and negotiation of incident to propose a contraction contractual agreements and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege Gateway Project, South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seven A two. Now item number twelve, negotiation and proposed contractual arrangement uh health insurance, South Carolina Code, Section thirty dash four dash seven A two. After returning, we will come back to open session uh after after the after after um executive session. Thank you tonight for joining us and uh you may wait till we come out of executive session. Or if you're not gonna wait, we're gonna say good night to you all and thank you for coming. And let me let's us entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go executive session.
Motion's been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman uh Knotts. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. The motion is carried. Good night.
We would like to entertain a motion to go back into open session, please.
Make a motion to come back into open session.
Most been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knotts, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Hawley and Mr. Mixon, if you would come forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Item 13 before the council this evening is a resolution to adopt health insurance benefits for the employees of the city of Orangeburg effective January 1, 2024, and repealing any conflicting resolution or ordinance. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mixon before we read the ordinance? Okay. A resolution to adopt health insurance benefits for employees of the city of Orangeburg effective January 1, 2024, and repealing any conflicting resolutions or ordinance. Most been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening again, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Item 14, for your consideration, is pursuant to the conversation we had in executive session. The resolution is before you that would allow the accepting of a proposal for the design and construction of the Gateway project at the corner of Chestnut and Highway 601. It would also allow me to enter into a contract to construct the same.
Okay, councilmen, they're in discussion on item number 14 before I read the resolution. If not, a resolution accepting a proposal for the design and construction of the Gateway project, authorizing the execution and delivery of a contract related to the same, and providing other related matters.
Move for the adoption of the proposal, design and construction of Gateway project.
Most have been made by Councilman Kit and second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you. We would like to entertain a motion to dismiss. Most been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and be safe.